We've been talking about the proposed ordinance to create a permanent race equity slash DEI commission. And we have city attorney Kylie Finell to present. Just a quick recap, a recap of Quinn's recap from last time is that React discussed this all last year. Gave a lot of input. Quinn presented that. He also presented kind of an updated ordinance based on different legal feedback attorney final final was I swear not doing on purpose. Looked at it had some more feedback. So now I was gonna say Kylie. Now we have Kylie here to take the lead and basically has some asks for us to get some feedback on some of the major issues that she can draft a ordinance that is legally sound from respect from the city. So so we're going to give some feedback tonight, hopefully help her craft that. And then that'll come next. That'll come back to us in a future study session where we can continue to craft and refine. But this is kind of the some of the really big questions we need to answer.
Thank you. Are you ready for the the kind of color coded?
Throw up the color coded spreadsheet. Yeah, let's let's dive into it.
Okay. I don't want you guys to get bogged down on this, but this is just kind of to help focus the conversation. So so what I have here kind of like four key areas that we kind of need. I need some direction on to move forward. On I put these polls on there. I know that I kind of took this from our retreat idea a little bit. But I'll just go through these all at once, just tell you what the four areas are, and then we can go back to them. The first is just is the the name or the focus of the commission going to be on race equity, or is it going to be on diversity, equity and inclusion? The second one is whether the removal of a commission member would be by the commission itself or by the mayor and council. And then if we go forward. That one, oh, gosh, that red really didn't turn out very clear is whether the commission would be allowed to accept public comment at mission meetings. And the fourth is whether the ordinance describes the duties of the commission specifically or generally. So let's go back up to the first page. So Quinn, I thought did a great job of talking about why centering race is important in his presentation. I guess that was two weeks ago, Quinn, right? But I I put this in here also as diversity, equity and inclusion, because when we did counsel goals last year, and then again this year, it was broader. And so I I thought to include that option and to see what the the read of the room was on the direction. I was on the gear network this week and I was there was some great information about DEI departments and managers and that they they center race in their work. And it was what when was talking about that intersectionality. And so I guess I just want to make it clear is that certainly focusing on races. The the DEI category is certainly includes that. It's just, do you want it to be as a name or as a commission, just focus on race equity? Or do you want a larger? So or a larger name, a a name, however you want to look at it. I'm just asking, what do you want me to call this thing?
So I think the the two questions are which one's best to come first, but probably what do we want this commission's focus? Do we want it solely on race equity? Or do we want abroad? And then I think a second question there too is then what does the title then be to reflect that? And I think we could craft titles. We could see if we can come up with something we grant tonight, but if not, we could tweak that. But I think we can at least get the core description of it, then that'll that'll inform things going forward. So I saw Anna's hand up first to comment and then Michael. Let's go from there and take your everybody's thoughts.
DEI or social justice and equity seems to me to be of of real use because then, well, it's been a really long meeting. So I'm just going to say if anybody wants to hear me go on about this for another five or 10 minutes, I will. But I like the broader inclusivity of either DEI or social justice and equity.
Michael.
So I think I'm the opposite. I was thinking so if we have this new department level person, that is the DEI. Right? They can kind of handle a lot of a lot of that other stuff. But the issue that started this whole thing was on race equity. So we could also we could change it down the road. We could have a race equity one and an LGBT task force or something like that. But right now I feel like the attention needs to be on race and the position is going to have. You know, I think we'll have the bandwidth to work with a race equity commission and, you know, be able to address other issues within the city. So that's just my quick take on it.
Denise, oh, sorry, Quinn and Denise, physically, yeah. They're very similar little hand flutters at the same time.
Little love test over here. I struggle with this because what you just what council member good now just said is correct. It emanated. Right? And it emanated a very particular time. And so there were circumstances and context, and I'm not bound by that. I think we need to do what's right for the city right now and looking forward, certainly looking at what's happened in the past. And as someone who was once asked when I'm going to stop being a feminist. And I told them as soon as women have equal rights and accessibility and pay. I can't, I can't vault another inequity over any of the others. I in my in my sense of integrity. I I I don't think you could say it's there. It's the time. It just it it feels reactive. It feels reactive instead of proactive. And so I I feel more comfortable with the general. Although I, you know, fully respect.
When the Jennifer.
Oh, diversity, equity and inclusion. Yeah.
Thanks. I think everybody knows my feelings on this. I'll just explain a little bit further. I think it's very important not to look at this issue in a vacuum. The Race Equity Advisory Committee was actually created by your predecessor, a woman of color on city council in reaction to the national turmoil around race and America's reckoning with race. That committee lasted for two years and then faced many challenges, namely with ones that we are putting right right now, right? Conforming with the charter and making sure that we are in line with all state laws, which is very important to make sure that it it goes forward and and isn't attacked by by folks that I saw in in many meetings not wanting to have any conversations about race. And if you look at Southern Poverty Law Center statistics over the last especially decade, white Christian nationalism is on the rise in this country everywhere. And it's getting very, very scary. And and so there is an eminence to this right now. After that committee, you know, face the legal challenges that we're trying to put right right now. One of the things that happened in that committee was a community conversation that was attended by about eighty five people in the community, mostly people of color. And one of the main things that they asked for was a strengthening of the Race Equity Advisory Committee. And so for an all white council to know that procedural posture, know the history, know the community leaders that champion this. And to say, okay, actually, this is this is what we're going to do now. Because we're the ones in power. Just be ready for for repercussions on that. I think it's very important to to know. A lot of people champion listening to their constituents. I would really, really, before we take the vote at any point, really encourage people to talk to the leaders in the community who are BIPOC and and see if they wanted the I commission or a race equity commission. Because from my year as chair, what I heard was race equity.
Jennifer.
Thank you. I know who the whole like, we're going to have a tiebreaker here. I know exactly who's going to be the tiebreaker. He's still thinking about it over there. She's so when I first was I wasn't present when we had this first discussion about should it be? You know, it had to do with our council votes last year, had to do with the the topic of equity and diversity in those terms. And and I was like, well, yeah, no, I mean, you know, equity and diversity, you know, we should do that because it, you know, like that includes women and includes, you know, handicap or disabled. It includes all kind, you know. I feel like first of all, I'm just gonna say it, we need to just call it a race equity advisory committee. We have an ADA committee. Just like Michael said, we could have a a whole, I mean, mayor can have a whole variety of different kinds of commissions by ordinance from us, right? To call myself a feminist, I have to include the intersectionality of the issues, right? The intersectionality that black women die more in hospitals, that women of color have more barriers than I do as a white woman. I have benefited from the privilege of being white while at the same time, you know, suffered some of the, you know, biases in our patriarchal society as a woman. And I do not believe it makes you any less feminist to believe that a race equity committee should exist. Because it honors the data. There's so much data out there that shows that the racial disparity is intersectionality and that women of color suffer more than we do as white women. And there if everything goes back to race when it comes to disparities. We you kind of overloaded us with data, Quinn. You gave us like a like dozens of pages to read like I don't even remember. Like I didn't read the whole document, but I have read a lot of data that shows disparities that exist. I just hope that we can consider. It's just as simple as the ADA commission. A racial equity advisory committee commission. And then we have somebody who's going to be staff who's going to be looking at issues of gender equity, ableist, you know, ableism, you know, all these other factors that are within our system. So and maybe the DEI will say we need to have, you know, a commission to evaluate gender, gender equity. And that is not binary. Gender equity is not binary. Okay? So there's other issues that exist. That's not just, you know, anyway, I'm just preaching to the choir about some of these things, but I think you have no where I'm at. Thank you.
You want to, or else I have some thoughts. Just want to make sure. Okay. Sorry.
So I'm a slow thinker. Did Anna say something yet?
Yes. No, am I crazy? Sweden. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so I read the packet. I've been here since the beginning of this. When Leslie first proposed it. Couple, two, three years ago. I've listened to you all. This is one of those things where I'm going along with the council, I think you can tell, but I have reservations. Quite frankly, the whole thing. I'm asking, first of all, I'm going to give you a decision based on listening to what you're saying. But I'm going to ask an ask, and I'm not saying that I agreed with everything that was presented. And I'm hoping that I'm not canceled for actually voicing an opinion. Which happens, and if it happens, it happens. For your homework tonight, if you would oblige me. This YouTube video just came out yesterday from John Stossel. It's called Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. DEI's Training Unintended Consequences. The keynote speaker is an African American professor that used to be a DEI officer. And one of the studies is from the Harvard Business Review surveying DEI programs and their effectiveness. I appreciate Quinn putting all that information in the packet. But just as Jennifer said, it was information overload to me. I'm listening to you guys. This is not mine. Quite frankly, it's not my number one priority, DEI. And I'm just going to be honest with you about it. And I hope you you embrace me being honest about it. Okay, because I've been silent about this issue. Having said that, I mean, if you go back a couple of years, I'm the one, and I don't fault who our police chief is, but I'm the one that spoke up and says this needs to be open outside of the police force, and we need to have a national search for the very reasons that I want this to be a fair process. And that did not work out. So I I do, I am sincere when I do believe that we need to have race considered and have a employee workforce that represents our community. I'm sincere in that. Sometimes the pendulum goes from one extreme to the other. And that's what I'm saying tonight. Now, the question before me is actually a rather simple one, but I just wanted to throw that out there. This this whole thing is you know, whatever gets me a little nervous. You probably sensed it. Getting back to this point, listening to all you guys. And the original I would go with the focus should be on race. DEI is separate. We put in the budget, the mayor's department. It's a race equity thing based on what I've heard in the past and what I've heard from my fellow council members tonight.
I'll tell you where I'm at in this is that I've reached out to a lot of different leaders of color in the community kind of asking this, asking this question. And I'd say that the answers have been split. I think the concerns about calling it DEI are certainly that race is one of the largest factors would would get lost, right? We don't want it watered down or an excuse to not talk about race if we're talking about everything else. I've also heard the, you know, concerns of of also we, you know, also should be looking at that gender disparities, LGBT issues that everything else as well. And we don't want to lose those either. I had a great conversation down in Olympia during a conference the other month and on the Olympia City Council. There's a gentleman who's the first African American on the council. I'm not sure about the first, but you know, also gay and young. And he kind of led the charge of getting their Social Justice and Equity Commission up and running. And I kind of asked him this question, too. I said, hey, we're going to be struggling with this, you know, what were your thought process? What do you go through? And he basically said, you know, it's all the same conversation here. How do you how do you do everything? And his response was keeping the the title broad, but then in the description of the group, absolutely centering race as one of the main concerns. And basically, if you have a mission statement for it, call it out right off the front is is the prime factor. And I'll tell you, I'm really struggling with where to land on this because I want to honor the people in the community who are worried about losing the focus of race as was initially brought up. But I don't, I also don't know about having, you know, four or five separate commissions down the road, each on a specific item. So I think we're kind of split on this. I would probably put my hat in the in the broader DEI category at the moment, just from the feedback I've gotten. But my suggestion is I think that kind of puts four to three on that. My suggestion would be, though, to Kylie able to move forward with that narrow majority on going broad. But then I think what we should do over the next two weeks is absolutely run this by everyone in the community. Yeah.
Point, point, do I do point of order to say I I don't think that's what the vote is.
Sorry. And three fourths and center center race. Yep, I'm so sorry. For the boxes. No, sorry. Three, it was fourth. Sorry. Three, four, DEI, four. Thank you. Thank you for correcting me. I had it.
Should we go ahead and do a straw straw poll? Sorry to interrupt you, President Coughlin.
No, it's okay. I appreciate the interruption because I had it wrong. Unless people's changed, I I'm kind of I'm seeing, I think it was one, two, three on broader, and then one, two, three, four, Jennifer, for race center.
Sure. And if you want to mind like we're not really making, these aren't real decisions.
It's not hard yet.
We don't make real decisions until the public gets to it, right? So I just wanted with four different variables, I didn't want to write sixteen different ordinances. I'm just trying to get some feedback. So I'm taking those numbers down. We right now I'm going to draft it as like
The draft is drafted as race equity commission. But that is the focus. And then we'll we have two weeks to talk to the community, hear back, think about it. It's not set in stone until we actually.
And I don't think that this is certainly, I don't think any of you have the idea that this is something that's going to be rushed through without public comment or
Absolutely not.
That. So I just wanted to have some guidance on these issues before I sit down and and work it out. So if certainly my my thought would be that you're certainly not I guess stuck with what you just said, if you the public comes in and you hear other testimony and things that move you, you can certainly go back the other way. I can read, I can read changes. I just wanted to get something written down and
Absolutely.
I think a good way to do it.
Perfect.
Okay, so the next one was about removal. So this was a provision that Brett and I wanted in an ordinance in the new committee because some of our committees don't have this and some of them have one in particular, our civil service commission has a very weird process that's in our charter that we have to go to Superior Court and ask that the person be removed. You have to get an order from a judge, which is strange. Even the judge thought it was strange. So I just had this generally, my experience, what we've seen is it's when people are put on a committee and then they stop showing up. And we don't want that to happen too long. And although there could be a situation where you know, if someone was taking actions against advice of council or things like that, that was subjecting the city to liability. That would be another reason that I think removal would be appropriate. And so the REAC recommendation in the ordinance that was created indicated removal by the commission itself. I'm asking the can the council to consider just removal by the mayor and council, which is the way you get on, is the way you get off. And the reason is, I think that it would put potentially put volunteers in a really tough position to recommend the removal of somebody. I mean, it's basically firing somebody and that sometimes makes people really uncomfortable. The other part would be, again, I think it's really consistent with our charter and our just how those kind of decisions are made, that the people are put on the committee in one, the way that they should be taken off. So my recommendation on that would be that they be removed by the mayor and the council.
Let's say, yeah, so now again, let's go Jennifer then.
No, I don't. Oh, I apologize. I'm so I'm sorry. There's a little, sometimes there's a little lag here. And just full disclosure, my kid who I haven't seen in years about to walk through my door any minute now. So I'm going to try not to get distracted by this like wonderful gift I'm about to get. But I don't think that's what we ended up with. And Quinn, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we end up with removal by like approval of council in our final approved draft or final meeting?
So I I don't want to get into a back and forth because I know Jeff's going to call me on it, but I'll address President Coughlin when I
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Study sessions, I got some
Study sessions are more relaxed. I thought we could talk. We're supposed to be able to talk to each other at study session.
Do you want me to answer that?
As long as things stay courteous and respectful, as they absolutely happen.
Yeah, of course, just to keep my perspective on on things. I wanted to one, present the ordinance that that RIAC had worked on in in multiple meetings over a year and and give everybody that feedback. And you have that, which is edited and and things like that. But then the the other one that has been proposed was after getting legal feedback. One of the things that I missed, and this is on me as the drafter of the ordinance, was one of legal suggestions was if it's just the commission removing people, then that takes away voter input, right? Like the the commission is not voted upon. The mayor is elected at large. We are elected by districts. There needs to be an accountability to voters, not just an accountability to the commission. So me personally, I I understand that. And I agree with Legal's recommendation that it should be a mayoral appointment and removal with council confirmation at both ends. I hope that answers your question, Jennifer.
Yeah, no, we didn't miss it. We didn't miss it. And that was that was something that we had a discussion about at our last meeting. And it was just you, me, Daryl and Aaron. And that was something that Legal told me that we could add when I talked to them. And so we so I there was a discussion about it and that part was in there. Removal because removal by mayors was standard wording. And we added by council as like a double safeguards that we didn't have some kind of
No, oh, got you. I think you're I think you're conflating. The the issue is the way I I wrote it after legal advice was keeping in that it was upon the approval of recommendation of the commission to the mayor. We're going to take that out. It's the mayor's recommendation to council, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I yeah, I I go with mayor and council.
It's and so the way that it was written, it made it like the the first step being that the commission recommends to the mayor that a person be removed. And I thought that was frankly, asking a lot of them because particularly if it was the chair. They might not really have control of the agenda or whatever to even make that vote and things like that. And so anyway, okay, so
I think, yeah, anyone opposed to keeping mayor, have a removal by mayor council, the second column there. Donna, you are. Yeah.
Is anything else done by both mayor and council?
Oh, yeah, lots of things. So all of the appointments of the department heads, me. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is
And and the appointment of all the boards and commissions, that's the section of the charter that is here. So yeah, so it's just, we don't usually put the removal in the ordinance, but I will say that we will be in the future.
Okay, I think we have
Okay, that was pretty good.
Census on that one.
So the next one is accepting public comment. And this one's tricky. And and I there's really not a simple way to explain this, but I will do my best. Okay. So we've got the charter and we've got state law. And the charter says that all of the city's committee meetings are going to be open to the public. The charter doesn't attach penalties to that, though. It's just a charter provision. And the reason I say that that's important is because then there's a state law that's Open Public Meeting Act, and that does attach penalties. And it is often litigated and because it includes attorney's fees and you all have been educated on OPMA, so you know what that is. So what gets complicated with a citizen advisory committee is that generally speaking, they're exempt from OPMA. They don't have to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act because they're advisory. But the the definition gets back around to them is if they take public comment at their that's considered a government function that then brings them back under the OPMA. So they get that protection in the statute where they don't have to comply, which is important because these are volunteers and or, you know, that that threat of having those, you know, $500 per violation and all that, and it's on them themselves. Is, you know, it can be scary, especially if maybe what sometimes happens is that people feel like they get caught up in OPMA violations, right? There's an email string or something like that. And it makes them nervous and then they don't want to participate because it's scary. So this is just something to consider. We don't have other committees where this is a part of the code where it says they don't accept public comment. But it's just I some one of these like risk things that we were talking about. So that's the one part. The other part of the risk analysis and accepting public comment is moderating a meeting. And in particular, I think that I would say that for this particular committee, this is maybe even a heightened risk. I don't know if those of you who have shared it would maybe agree. Because of the subject matter, it draws out I don't know, sometimes rude folks. So really explain that. But I just think that there's probably a heightened risk of and and what I mean by that is when you're moderating a public meeting, you you can't, you have to give everyone the same amount of time to speak. You can't cut people off if they're being you know, rude or or even off topic, because once you open up for public comment, they get their time. And so sometimes that's hard and it would require training that this because these are going to be staffed by um, again, volun, or, you know, uh, led by volunteers. So that person would need to be educated and, and trained on moderating a public meeting. It takes public comment. And so Quinn, I think, has some firsthand experience.
Yeah, definitely. I, I can, um, I, I'm trying to be as like neutral as possible with my experience, but also, you know, giving, doing my opinion based on my experience. Um, you know, I, I think Kylie's being generous in that, you know, the issue of race equity in America right now draws out rude people. I would say it draws out some pretty racist people, um, that, that have made some comments, um, in, in our meeting, which is their First Amendment right to do so. Um, the, the, the issue that I was seeing was, um, exactly what Kylie's talking about. Um, you know, as I, I'm a, I'm a barred attorney, right? Like my, my expertise isn't in First Amendment, but I know that, you know, I, I can't do any sort of viewpoint discrimination. Um, and that's a lot to ask for a volunteer to, to moderate that. Um, there was also frustration from members when I, I came on as chair and started communicating what Legal was communicating to me, which was, hey, there might be some OPMA issues that, that we need to, to educate our members about. Uh, lots of the questions were, well, how do we, can't we communicate afterwards? Um, to, uh, uh, what are the ways that we can legally circumvent this? Because we need to be able to do the work, right? The people that do this work are community activists and a core function of community activists is communicating and getting people up to speed. Um, and, and making sure that there is tight communication with, with folks. And so that was a frustration of community members. Um, I, I think that my opinion is that if it's going to be fully staffed by volunteers that are community members, we should not um, place the burden of First Amendment and OPMA violations in moderating that. I know that the, 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 the risk of that is taking away public comment and people that might not be able to, um, be physically at the meeting to be able to, to say something at that moment. But from a liability standpoint, and especially from my perspective, being able to do the work um, without so many institutional limitations, which became frustrating to the committee while I, I chaired. Um, it's something that, that not allowing public comment could take away. And, and I think that's a, a smart decision.
I, I did want to add one thing real quick, before we go into. I, I don't want to, like, one of the things that I think might be a concern is, um, that some of the, the topics that the committee is discussing, um, needs public comment, right? And I think that's where the advisory committee aspect comes in and that that's when they come to you and says that we need, we need a public, um, meeting time. Um, you know, we need some space on your agenda. We need a, a fifth Wednesday to talk about this issue or whatever. And so then that can be provided as a part of a council meeting, um, to address a topic, basically a recommend date and advise, uh, uh, part of that advisory committee to the council could be that I, they think that they need to have um, public listening session or whatever on this topic and that that needs to be, that time needs to be made available and we make it as a special meeting of the council.
Good. Technical question. Would public comment also incorporate writing in comments to the commission? Like right now, people can write in the council or show up and speak, um, just taking public comment like that.
I don't think that would necessarily make it subject to the OPMA. I think it's the moderating at the meeting, but I can, I can look into that specifically. No, I think, I mean, because the, the committee could certainly like review maybe mail or emails or something like that, but it would just be, it's, it, that wouldn't implicate the, the First Amendment issues. And I don't think that's, that would subject it to the OPMA, but I'll find out.
Okay.
Kind, kind of related to that, then.
Yeah, go Michael, McElair, Connor, I think ours, uh, Sunlights.
Could they have a special meeting out in the public? Like, because you know, they were going to events, they had events previously. Can they do those or those meetings?
Well, the, the people can do them, but if it was the committee doing them, then that would, if they're, they couldn't have.
Could they go out in the community and participate in a summit and have a listening tour or something, you know?
No, probably not.
Anna, then Eric.
Can, is it possible for both of these to just say, why don't we put it to, pitch it to the commission once its members are selected and let them decide?
Well, I wanted you to decide because it's a liability issue.
Yeah, I think that does need to compromise.
I vote for low liability on number three and four.
Eric.
So that's, it's twofold. I agree with Quinn. First of all, it's a liability issue on the city. You know, we're, we're the board and we need to be looking at possible legal exposure for anything that we enact. And I think you're, we're doomed. Um, potentially if, if we've got people that aren't city employees and they're subject to the OPMA, and then what happens if they violate it? You know, and we don't have a control. Long term, we do by the, the power of removal, but the damage could be done. The other thing is out of concern for whoever the committee chair is, let's not put this dangerous tool on their hand where things can go haywire. I mean, I, I was up there for a few years. I remember having big crowds and trying to control that on certain tub. It's, it's not an easy thing. And to asset of a community member, um, that's not getting compensated and that hasn't had training and experience doing it, maybe they do. But that might be the luck of the draw on, on what you get as far as your experience. I wouldn't want to put that on them. Um, so for those reasons, I say do not allow public comment. However, as Jeff mentioned, I think it's crucial, you have a five to eight member committee as these proposals are written, that this isn't so myo, myopic, that these are just the opinions of these five to eight people. You have to have a mechanism that allows the public that's listening in on these meetings be able to chime in. It may not be a two-way conversation and a real-time conversation, but the public needs to give input to this committee. And then maybe it's as simple as reading the letters. I don't know. Here's a public comment that we received last month, and then the committee can discuss that. If that's okay to do, I think that's the mechanism to use.
I think, and I'm gonna go to Jennifer. It sounds like we're, we're getting a, a good majority here. Um, but Jennifer, your thoughts on this?
Like I'm hearing all, okay, sorry, I'm gonna be that person again, but I do want to just honor the people, because we did have this discussion, um, on October thirteenth of twenty-two. We had this discussion about, you know, I think I had thrown out the idea of like, well, let's just not have public comment and da, 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 da. Um, and so I did receive some feedback, uh, critical feedback, um, which, uh, you know, I took to heart and I actually connected with this person. I found this person and I called them. Um, but there, but, uh, there was somebody who said they really resented the fact that I wanted to get rid of public comment just to meet OPMA because I would be silencing them. And so to that end, um, I think having a mechanism in place is a, is an absolutely necessary idea. I'm not willing to vote like, I mean, we're not voting voting, but I'm not willing to take either one of these positions because I want to know what the mechanism is that's going to be in place to allow for the comments, for the public to have issues that are gonna arise to come up. Um, I did, anyway, thank you.
My thought on this is, um, thinking back to being on planning commission, um, on a planning commission takes public comment, um, both written and in person, um, obviously less controversial for, you know, zoning updates than, than this topic. Um, do we, is there any other commissions that currently take public comment or is it just planning? Park, Parks does, well, Director, okay. So we kind of have a precedence here, but yeah, there you saw I'm going with this. Just want to create it. Whatever we come up with, I'd like to see it. The uniform, I guess.
So respectfully, it's totally different because for each one of those commissions, you have a department head that effectively is running the meeting and guiding the planning commission and the Parks Commission. My understanding as presented, you do not have a department head or someone from the mayor's office that's running this commission, unless I read the proposed ordinances incorrectly.
I think that the idea was that there would be staff supports provided, um, from, it's the city attorney's office and then that the DEI person would attend the meetings, but I don't think it's anticipate, the, the, the. I think this is kind of goes into the next one that we're gonna talk about a little bit is the duties and it's kind of comes down to agenda control, right? And so, um, with the planning commission, the planner, planning really doesn't set their own agenda, right? It's, it's, it's set by the DC.
Right.
And, um, I, I, this committee, I don't see, I think it's gonna have more autonomy than that.
Fair enough. I didn't, but I do think it just the, the chair of the planning commission does take the public comment, although you have staff there, they're, they're running.
It's often required by statute, I, I think, for some of the land's decisions, that there be public comment.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah, because they're, they're public hearings. And I think our Parks Commission has similar requirements in our code. I know that like we, one of our initiatives or referendums that's in our code relates to park properties and it refers everything to that, to have public input. Um, once again, this is just from watching it last year.
No, that, that helps me clarify the distinction. Um, uh, okay, no, that, I think that got me past that, uh.
And, and, again, some of this is just that, um, you know, it's, it's just by the risk and it's my job to point about to you. So you guys make the decisions.
Yeah, we can give thumbs up. How about go to Quinn and then we'll, we'll just get a quick count on this and.
Yeah, yeah, just last comment. I think Eric's point is exactly right. Um, and I think the difference even between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two REAC and, and what this commission is shaping up to be is there isn't any members of the governing board that would be chairing or vice-chairing, right? It would all be community-led, um, which I think is, you know, the main ask that I heard was kind of get out of the way, let us do our work. And it's like, that's fine, but because of risk liability, we have to set some parameters of, of that place, of them being able to do that work um, without interference. And if there isn't a department head, if there isn't a council member on there, um, I think from a risk management standpoint, it makes sense.
So then, are we?
Let me just do a show of thumbs up if your thumbs up for no public comment. Okay, so we got a clear majority on that one.
And I'll find out about.
No spoken, but of course, let's look.
I'll find out about the comment.
Written and all the other.
Which kind of goes into the second one, the, the final one, the blue. Um, I decided I'll hear duties in, in specific and general. And so the, the, the bones of the ordinance that went through REAC and kind of we started with came from Bainbridge Island and they had a really specific duty section. It, um, was, it, it got like down into kind of like, at that point, they had, um, it sounded like had a, a strategic plan and the committee was established to, um, implement that. And there were several other ones. Um, when I was reading it, to me, it seemed like some of those just didn't fit for Bremerton and like, we weren't maybe in some of the, we weren't really at that stage or whatnot with, um, some of the efforts. And so, um, I just put it on there. I think it does need to be clear that it be, be clear what the duties are, but I don't know that they need to be quite as specific as that particular example. And, and this was the one that lended itself rather poorly to the setup I had for the other one. So feel free to just disregard that table because it's hard to say, I mean, I would just say if you saw that section, it's, it's in the duty section, like, do you really like it? Or do you want me to come up with something else is how I would look at this one because, um, I'm not, I don't want it to just necessarily say, oh, go forth and do good work and just leave it that general. But, um, I just didn't think that those specific duties really fit. And, um, I wasn't really sure though, which direction you guys wanted to take on that one.
Okay, and I'll just preface with the joint planning session. I know we had the discussion of, um, we can get something on the books now. We can amend it later and update the ordinance later, just.
Right.
Out there, yeah.
So I can just do something that's more gen, general about it being advisory. Um, and then, um.
Just a quick straw poll i, if you want the more general, but yeah. Okay, let's see. Yeah, okay. So it seems on majority, but let's, yeah, quick comments on it and thoughts. Uh, it's our Jennifer hand up first and Quinn. And then, sorry, Anna, was your?
I keep leaving this hand up, you guys. I need to come back and be in person more. No, I apologize. I have no comments on this. I go with whatever y'all want to do.
Quinn and Anna.
Yeah, I, I think, um, real quick, I, I just think that goes with the intent of the committee as well to not have city council or the mayor's office, um, kind of define all of the issues, let them define what their work plan is going to be. Let the community decide what, um, goals and priorities. And so, yeah, I, I, I think I accidentally left this one in, so.
That's fine.
Thanks for catching.
So the thing that I think would be helpful, just in our ongoing conversations about this, though, is thinking about what it's going to do. Like what is the expectation? And like some examples, like what, like in your mind, when you think about like how these meetings are gonna go and like what, what we're really asking of these people, I think that we should be pretty clear about that.
I, that it is, uh, paraphrase, like every other commission, it is an advisory board. Only the elected members of the city make the decisions. Um, but they can, like any other commission, bring recommendations to us with a unanimous vote or the split vote, just like planning commission sometimes comes in or, or other ones and say, you really recommend the council of.
So like, a good example I think would be is like, you know, the, let's say the council, there's been pushback when we've had vacancies, right? That maybe they weren't, um, filled. They were filled in a way that was either too fast or, you know, whatever, there's been pushback, right? And so let's say as a council, you, we don't have any vacancies right now, but you decided that, hey, we don't want to have pushback anymore. We want to get it right. And so I could see that the, um, council could put in a request to the committee to consider, um, what are the recommendations or, you know, how can we do this process better? Um, because we want to be, want to do better and we've gotten, you know, like sharing the concerns that we've gotten from people and asking the committee for some help with that. Um, but there, then there needs to be like, I think, also for effectiveness, that the ability for the people on the committee to have become aware of the situation and to be able to talk about that and then make a recommendation to council on their own, that they see, um, let's say that they were the ones that got that feedback, that the process wasn't great and they wanted to, on their own, come up with something better and make a recommendation to council. I could see that, but the, the thing that I think we is that it does need to be clearly defined that it is advisory. And so it's not like, um, there should be more outreach about this program. Oh, okay. Well, I'll get a table at this and I'll do that. Yeah, it needs to be a recommendation to the council or to the mayor's office to take certain action.
Excellent. Okay, so I think, yeah, last comment, then I think it sounds like you have.
There, I thought I read something about presentations or doing community outreach. And I personally feel very uncomfortable, uh, with, with volunteers going out on behalf of the city and doing race training. Um, that, so I, you know, I, the direct, the direct services, advisory, direct services, and you don't do direct services when you're.
Right. And so that was one of the ones I'd actually suggested that we moved, that it wasn't an advisory task and that that one be.
I'm sorry, so there's a fifth and sixth box. I know it's getting late and.
Oh, it's not.
If, if it, if it upsets you, you know, I'll buy, I, I'm buying cheeseburgers at McDonald's, so whatever. Um, because that's where I'm heading afterwards.
There's only four boxes.
No, I know. Do you need a fifth and six? I want to get this out of the way because this will make our next meeting easier.
How about you propose a movement, decide whether to tackle tonight or at the next study session?
Okay, so I read both proposed ordinances are very similar, a little bit of differences. And one difference, um, is in the compensation. One ordinance says zero compensation, the other one says no compensation, but a seventy-five dollar stipend. So, uh, I prefer no compensation to treat it like any other, uh, committee. Um, so that's my preference. And I don't know what, if we want to address that now, it's up to you, but I'd just like to get that out of the way so we don't, you can write in the ordinance one way or the other.
Yeah, if that's gonna be a sticking point, I'd rather get it out of the way. So thumbs up, thumbs down on seventy-five dollar stipend.
I'll go for a Quinn. Sorry, I'm trying not to jump.
Sorry, yeah, um, I, I, I agree with you that it needs to be consistent with the other commissions. I would, I, I'm, I'm fine striking that language. Um, most likely I'll be coming back to council to propose like a seventy-five dollar or fifty dollar stipend to everybody that volunteers their time, just to cover childcare or gas or, or whatever, just to, to, you know, recognize people's time.
I agree with that.
So it's no, no.
No, in this ordinance, but we will evaluate for all commissions equally, yeah, down the road.
Okay.
I, oh, may I just say, I think I really love that idea, Quinn, because when I was on the arts. Oh, may I just say, I think I really love that idea, Quinn, because when I was on the arts commission, it was, uh, I gave up a lot of time and it would have been nice, you can really, we had some vacancies. That would really help fill some of those vacancies. A seventy-five dollar stipend is very small. Thank you. Denise is over and she wants to go. I'm so sorry, Denise.
Okay, so, but that's, that's not, we're, we're good. So, okay. Okay, the, the sixth box, and I was confused on this one as well. Comparing other committees. And that is, it says for both of proposed ordinances that it can be a residence of Bremerton, which I agree with. Or resident of unincorporated Kitsap County with Bremerton addresses. And to me, that's like, huh? So I thought this was for city of Bremerton residents.
So the charter allows us to change those requirements by ordinance, so it's whatever you want.
Ri- right, I understand the charter does, but to the best of my knowledge, the only commission that we have that has someone that is outside the city of Bremerton, in other words, requires a city of Bremerton resident, is our resident CPA uh, that works on the audit commission because you don't want to.
You're right. That's the only exception. This is just one that came out of REAC and I didn't have a legal reason to say.
Okay, I'm just trying to be consistent with all the other commissions in that this is the city of Bremerton. When we take public comment, anyone can comment, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm going against myself. We, we like, we tend to put more emphasis, I would think, on people that live in the city that are Bremerton residents when they're asking us to change things versus someone from Bainbridge Island that says, yeah, I don't like how you're doing this. I mean, that doesn't sit well with me. So I, I would like to take my direction from advisory committee, from residents of the city of Bremerton.
And Quinn, I think was the one that wrote this.
Yeah, I, I can give you like a little background about that, Eric. Um, it's kind of twofold. One, one of the people that, um, regularly attended meetings and really wanted to be on REAC, but again, could not because of, um, of the charter saying you have to be a Bremerton resident except for ordinance. Um, she constantly, um, gave really great input and, and was a BIPOC, um, community member. Um, but also I just thought from like an equity standpoint, um, I know that a lot of the times, based on historical redlining, communities are segregated by race. Um, and so even though, you know, you might consider yourself a Bremertonian, but you live, and, and this resident did, I think, live like two blocks outside of, of Incorporated Bremerton. Um, but, but culturally was a part of the city. So I, I, I think it was just an effort to recognize her contributions and also recognize, um, the history of redlining and, and possibilities that community members of color might have been forced to outer limits of the city uh, based on wealth accumulation or, or bank lending that, that took place. So that was kind of the, the rationale. But if council wants to strike that, I'm fine with that as well.
Anna, yep.
I moved to limit discussion on this matter to four minutes.
Fair enough. Until we're getting short on time, so.
So I take it you don't want a cheeseburger.
Do I have a second?
We don't quite do the motions and seconds in, in study sessions, but, um, no, but point, point taken. Um, so I think let's leave it off for now. If that was REAC's original recommendation, there's no legal motion against it. But we can discuss it next time. If we want to keep it, oh, I can, I'm so sorry, Jennifer, sometimes you go in and out.
Well, I, I, it's, it's, you know what? Because I'm eating and I didn't want to upset you. Um, so I've been going off cam. So I, I say to leave it in because, uh, some of the people that wanted to be on it were also business owners in our community. Um, so that was another relevant point. You can talk about the historical data like, like Quinn did, which is relevant. But then there's also the practice side, that somebody who lives across the street from a Bremerton, you know, resident, but they're in, they're outside of this, you know, they're still participating in Bremerton. So I think the intent was to include people who had relevance in Bremerton, including business owners.
Oh, yeah, definitely will. Okay, let's leave it, um, leave it as is for now and let's pick that up next time. All right, so I think you've got, thank you so much, Kylie, for the turn for, for tackling all this. Thank you, everybody, um, especially former REAC members for, um, really bringing this forward. And so we'll have, so we'll get this on the, so this will be on the next study session, which is in a couple of weeks, because we don't have a meeting next week. Um, yes, I believe this is twelfth, uh, yes. So the next study session, um, we'll pick it up there if, or if miraculously, we think we have a really solid ordinance. Um, we can move it to the general for a vote, or I'm going to guess more likely, we'll probably need at least one more study session after that. Um, incorporating public, uh, well, feedback that we've individually gotten. Um, but we'll see where we're at next time. So that's the next step. Indeed, yes, yes. Thank you all. All right.